Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to go into the hall this meeting to order for the City Council. First thing up on the agenda is roll call. Terrell?
Mayor Gill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dukes?
Here.
Councilmember Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Starkey?
Here. Okay, if you'd please rise for the invocation and the flag salute. Vice Mayor?
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity once again to represent our citizens, to govern our city, and to lead to our future. We pray that you will be with us this evening, that you would give us wisdom and direction, we pray, in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Buckland, would you please do the pledge of allegiance?
I just salute the flag with my face. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got, first up is presentations and proclamations, and we're very excited here today because we've got three proclamations to give out. Obviously, the first one is going to be to Sapphire Group, recognition for the California Chrome Event, which is Kerry Hawk and DeeDee Brady. And then we'll have a second proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and that's going to be presented to Marina Kavanaugh. Is Marina here? Oh, there you are. Okay, we'll do your number two here. And then number three is retirement proclamation for Officer Scotty Clinkenberg, which we'll get into in a little bit here. So first up is Sapphire Group, if DeeDee and Kerry can come up. Got some pictures up here from the event. You got that? Yep, the other one. Come on up here in the middle. Come on up here and smile for the camera there, so the camera can see you at home.
They're watching these pictures.
Yeah, they're watching these pictures. California Chrome Event appreciation, one of the stated priorities for the City Council was to enhance the image of our city. Perry and Denise Martin, California Chromes, and the race for the Triple Crown provided just such an opportunity for the regional, state, and national recognition. This became a citywide event and was staffed from police, fire, public works, Parks and Recreation Administration, all lending a hand. Without the support and efforts of the business community, the successful event could not have taken place. At this point in time, I'd like to recognize some of the sponsors. Sun Suite Growers, when these guys were called, we told them what we were doing. Without hesitation, they just had put us in for this dollar amount, put us in for that dollar amount. Sun Suite Growers, which donated $10,000. Recology Uba City donated $5,000. Syracuse Central Credit Union donated $5,000, and we have other sponsors, Cambridge Junior College, Express Personnel, Graphic Design and Marketing, Helber Zink, Rite Out Health Group, Uba City Racquet Club, the Uba City Downtown Business Association, and the Uba City Chamber of Commerce. So at this point, I would like to recognize personally and thank Kerry Hawk and DeeDee Brady for the Sapphire Group. Kerry and DeeDee took the role of the event coordinator on such a short notice, I think we had about 10 days, or I shall say you girls had about 10 days, to pull this event together and make this event something that was very exciting, very fun, and very successful for our community as well. So on behalf of the City Council and the staff, please accept this token. Have appreciation from the entire City Council, which has our city's logo, and please display this at your office. And I can honestly tell you, the time that I was involved with this particular deal, that we did so many interviews for all of the local channels, including some of the international ones, including Al Jazeera. So it's nice to see that they were all in town. Right after the race, two days, I did reach out to the Martins and did personally invite them to come here to the city of Uba City, where we will present them the key to the city. And he's accepted, so he's going to give me a couple of dates here, either in late July or August. He told me that the horse was doing really well, since he got a big cut, was resting. Words he used was pampered, and they're going to get him ready to run in the Breeders' Cup, which is going to be November 1st. So, yeah, so it's going along very, very well. Would you both ladies like to say something?
This was a team effort. If I could get Heidi from Graphics Marketing to just stand up and be recognized, she did a lot of work on this event, and so did Footeen. Footeen, if you could wave or stand up, I know you don't want to stand, but it was a pleasure. I know Recology, we recognized them. They were there all day, picking up trash, keeping the streets clean, so they went above and beyond, but it was a group effort, and we thank you all. And Donna, too, from the Downtown Business Association, she really helped us out, providing us with documents and some guidance, so, thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I think Kerry disrupted it, but we do appreciate all the help that we had. It was a quick turnaround, it was a fun event, we couldn't control the heat, would have been great if the horse had won, but, you know, those were things we couldn't quite control. It was, he still won the first two races, and we still have a lot to be proud of, so it was great.
Absolutely. I think if the horse would have won, we probably wouldn't be here, we'd still be celebrating.
Yeah.
So, thank you, ladies, very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'd like to invite Marina down up here. Might go ahead and read this, the proclamation, but I've got a smaller version of it. July is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I would like to welcome Marina Kavanaugh to the Sexual Assault Program, Director of Casa de Es Pranza. The observance of Sexual Assault Awareness Month provides an opportunity for all citizens to reflect on what sexual violence is. Every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence and how to prevent it. In our community, Casa de Es Pranza has led the way in addressing sexual assault. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council hereby proclaims July 2014 a Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the city of Uba City encourage all residents working together to make a difference in the fight against sexual assault and gender and violence in our community. No means no. Proclaimed on this 24th day of June 2014, on behalf of the entire City Council, I'd like to present this proclamation to you. Would you like to say a few words?
So, as you know, July is going to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we are going to have an event. It's called Walk a Mile in Their Shoes. I'm looking at you, because I've already talked to you about it. It's a men's march, where you walk in women's high heels. And Walk a Mile in Their Shoes is, it's an opportunity to get people talking, it's a fun event. It demonstrates that men are willing and able to be courageous partners with women in making the world a safer place. So I hope to see all you men there at the Uba Sutter Mall on July 12th at 11 o'clock, please, and to wear teal ribbons during the whole month of July, okay? Thank you. I thank you all.
Thank you. Shall we volunteer one of you guys to walk? Jason, and Darren, and Steve, and Craig?
Councilman Starkey.
I believe we can have the officers in uniform, too, even though I have high heels on, so. That'd be pretty cute, wouldn't it, Rob?
That would be very cute.
The council needs to be in high heels. Everybody on. They have, they have all, they have to all men, all men. So, come on, guys.
There you guys go, guys. Thank you for being here, Footeen.
Yes.
Very well, thank you. Anytime I can help.
Let me call up here Police Investigator Scotty Clinkenberg to come on up here. Congratulations on your retirement after 27 years with the Uba City's Police Department. Oh, they want to come up, okay, as soon as they finish this, or you want them up here? All right, come on up.
Come on, you guys. Come on.
Come on up.
I'm not going to do this by myself, I never did it by myself. Come on, Brian. I said you never. I never did any of that.
Well, I don't know, Scotty, I think every time you put a weapon on somebody's arms, it's by yourself.
Come on, ladies, come on up.
Oh, man, it's all guys up here.
This is who we are.
Yeah, let's go, it's a team. Team effort, teamwork.
I'll retire.
I got a seat here for you, but you can't.
Okay, well, during Scott's career at Uba City Police Department, Investigator Clinkenberg served as a field training officer, NET 5 investigator, two-year investigator, and a five-year investigator. Has been recognized with numerous awards and commendations for professional performance, most notably in the area of major felony investigations. Police Officer Clinkenberg has always completed each and every case that he was assigned to as if his family was the victim, ensuring that no stone was left unturned, no victim's questions was left answered, and each cause was fully investigated. Scotty Clinkenberg took an oath when he was hired to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution. An oath is never broke, and so honorably served for more than 27 years. So now therefore, be it resolved that I Cash Gill, Mayor of the city of Uba City, on behalf of the entire Council and citizens, we serve, do hereby congratulate Police Investigator Scotty Dale Clinkenberg on the occasion of his honorable retirement, June 13th, 2014. We wish Scotty and the family the very best in the future. Scott, let me give you an official proclamation, signed by myself, to you. Congratulations on your retirement. One of the things that I do want to mention, many of you don't know, that Scott and I, and my brother Buzz, we're twins, we went to kindergarten together to Berry School and high school, and then to Uba College, and then Scott took off to Sac State. And the interesting thing is, we'd get in fights at school, and we'd call on Scott to come and protect us.
That was my brother.
Yeah, and then he'd definitely come out, and every time you knew you had Scott behind you, they always scared the heck out of you, because I don't think you ever lost a fight, either in high school or either at Berry School, but, you know, it's my pleasure to be here, to give you this proclamation, having gone to school with you in all the different facets from Berry and growing up as a family friend. So congratulations, and on everything that you've done for our city of Uba City, and on behalf of our entire Council and all of the citizens, I personally want to thank you for protecting us and serving us.
I knew you were going to offer me if I had a few words, so that's why I took the mic. He was actually Cash, the one that was doing all the fighting and protecting us. I don't know why you don't want to stand up, he's always been my hero. A couple of things I wanted to say would be, first, it's not about me, it's about us, and it always has been. It's been an honor and a privilege over the years. And I think, one of the things I wanted to remind people is what we do is, we see the worst and the best of what society has. And in doing that, I would say, all the years I've trained officers and did it, I always told them to look back when you're done doing what you have to do. And the question you need to ask is, is what you did, was that the way you would have done it for your family? Is that the way you want me to treat your mother, and your father, and your brother? And if the answer is yes, even if you don't know what you're doing, and you stumble into some uncharted territory, then you're doing it right. Like I say, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I believe that the people you have in front of you uphold that, and they'll do what's right under the worst of conditions and the best, and I just, I'm here to tell you, you've got the best taken care of you. Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is public communication and welcome and encourage you to participate in this meeting. Public comments taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comments on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversy, items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Item number four is written requests. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allotted five minutes to speak. Terrell, do we have any written requests?
We do not have any written requests.
Okay, item number five is appearance of interest citizens. Member of the public may address the City Council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Anybody from the public wishes comment on items at this point in time that are not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to consent calendars. All matters listed in the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from consent calendar for individual. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Wonderful, motion carries. Item number nine under general items, Retirement, Health Savings, RHS Plan, Adoption and Related Plan Documents, presented by Natalie Walter.
Is this on? Yeah. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight I bring before you the city's Retirement Health Savings Plan, or RHS Plan, documents for your approval. A little background on what an RHS Plan is. An RHS Plan is an option for employees to plan for retiree health costs. The city's plans are currently with ICMA. There are three bargaining units, or employee groups that participate in the RHS Plan. It's the Fire Management, the Fire Union, and the Department Heads. The, all contributions paid towards the RHS Plans are made by the employee only, so to just say it another way, the city doesn't contribute any money towards the RHS Plans. The Affordable Healthcare Act affected the terms of the RHS Plan, and so we have two plans that are, we have two items going before you tonight. One item is the pre-January 1st, 2014 RHS Plan. There are some documents that we found that were not completed when that plan was originally set up, so we are completing those documents tonight to comply with IRS regulations. The second thing that I'm asking you tonight is to establish a new plan that is compliant with the Affordable Care Act, that would be post, if you will, effective January 1st, 2014. So at this time, I'll take any questions?
Any questions from the members of the Council, from Natalie at this point in time? No questions. Through the mayor. Yes. Natalie, you named off three groups that take advantage of this. Is this open, citywide, to all of the groups?
Yes, it could be. These are the three groups that have decided to contribute mandatory. It's a mandatory contribution, is part of why some of the bargaining units don't contribute. So some, one bargaining unit contributes 2% of their earnings, and one bargaining unit contributes 3% of earnings. Another way to structure it is upon your retirement, you have to contribute a certain amount of your vacation bank towards this plan, but it's mandatory. All members have to participate. So I think that's sometimes what may limit people from participating. That's an IRS requirement, is the mandatory part.
That's all I have, thank you. Through the mayor. Yes, I move the recommendation. Okay, I got a motion, second, and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Natalie. Next up is item number 10, Fiscal Year 2014-15 Citywide Purchases. Spencer Morrison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. The item I bring before you tonight is the Fiscal Year 2014-15 Citywide Purchases, AKA the 50K Staff Report, as staff calls it. The purpose of this staff report is to consolidate all known purchases that will exceed $50,000 in the fiscal year. The staff report will help streamline purchases during the year and allow the City Council to have an overall understanding of the sole source and professional services purchases. So formal bid purchases will continue to go through the formal bid purchases process outlined in the city's purchasing policies and procedures. However, these are just the ongoing or anticipated sole source vendors that require your approval. And so it's, we're hoping it's a time saver for you to come all at one time. These purchases include, through the Fire Department, Ellen Curtis and Sons, which provides a lot of the fire gear and equipment, through the Finance Department, Willdan Financial Services, which administers the assessment districts, provides a continuing disclosure on bond issues, and arbitrage rebate reporting. Independent Stationers, which provides the city's office supplies through a local vendor. Spillman Technologies, which is the police computer aided dispatch, police and fire computer aided dispatch. Sun Guard Panimation, the city's financial software, Dell Computer Systems, which we use to purchase all of our machines. Caltest, contracted lab services in the Public Works Department. Badger Meter, the brand of all the meters in the ground in the city. And Polydine, which is a new sole source, we're actually going to piggyback on the North Bay Agency Chemical Contract for belt press polymer. With that, the staff's recommendation is to approve citywide reoccurring purchases over $50,000 from July 1st, 2014 to July 30, 2015, based on each purchase recommendation being in the best interest of the city. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Spencer?
None at this time.
Through the mayor. Yes. Back to the Ellen and Curtis and Sons of Oakland. I had this very same question last year, and I don't think it was ever answered. And that is, why this is fire gear? Doesn't seem to be anything that is, it's hoses and things like that. Why are we limiting this to sole source to this group?
The explanation provided by the department, Mr. Councilman, is Ellen Curtis and Sons has exclusive contracts with many manufacturers of fire equipment used by the Uba City Fire Department. Standardization of equipment for all fire units is necessary for efficient use in emergencies. That's the explanation that we've been given.
And my question is, does anyone other than Ellen and Curtis and Sons in the state of California or the western region offer the same gear?
I do not have an answer for you at this time. If you would like me to return with this item and with an answer, then staff can work on that for you.
Can we possibly approve everything but that?
Depends on what your motion is, or if Councilmember Buckland... I was going to see if he had any more. I mean, I'm just, I'm... That's a great question. I mean, I've asked this last year, and the answer seemed to be the same. It's back this year, and again, I'm just trying to get a feel for why we have to go with a sole source for fire equipment. I understand the standardization, but my question is, is this equipment available other location from other vendors?
And staff would have to do further research for you, so if you, your motion would like to not include Ellen Curtis and Sons, we can bring Ellen Curtis and Sons back at another time.
At the next agenda, and by then you'll have most of the answers figured out. Through the mayor. Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the item with the exception of the Ellen and Curtis and Sons item, that that'll be brought back later.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second, and all in favor signify by saying aye. Great, motion carries. Thank you, Spencer. Next up is business from City Council, City Council reports, Councilmember Buckland. Attended, on June the 9th, attended the SECOG Government Relations Committee meeting. Of interest during these discussions during the entire morning, really dealt with the transportation of crude oil by rail in California. It's headed, the destination is the Bay Area refineries, or one refinery in particular, and they're going through the SEQA process for the transportation. Many jurisdictions in the northern California region have taken some action along these lines of wanting pre-notification. SECOG is going to represent our region in the SEQA document, and will be moving forward with some input to that, so each jurisdiction does not have to have an individual action by their governing bodies. I would note that there is a potential that this crude would be coming through the Highway 70 corridor through Marysville and lightly touch the southern region of Sutter County. Transportation of this material, it's highly volatile, and there's some concerns regarding public safety's response or ability to respond to an incident that may occur. So they're, they're really, SECOG is really taking the advantage of their regional designation to build a, address some of the issues that are at hand. In the mayor's absence, I was able to attend, and I think you've attended in the past, the HOBE event down in Sacramento. A bunch of high school sophomores come in for three, four days through the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Program. Was able to go down there, sit on a panel with many, I felt underprepared for what these sophomores in high school, the questions that they could ask, but our Secretary of State was on the panel with me, many mayors were on that panel, and they were all looking for our mayor to be there. And all I could offer them was my few comments that I could make regarding, how do you change local government? So we had a great time for about three hours down there. Also went to the Highway 99 Bridge opening, or the ribbon cutting for the bridge at Nicholas. This is partially funded by SECOG, Caltrans. Many of us were there, it was a great time. Our vice mayor was able to speak at that, and I'm sure he'll also reference it. But also attended, just last week, our Board of Directors meeting at SECOG. Again, just follow up, where we, as an entire group, kind of battled with rail issues, and also looking at some of the other legislative things that are coming down, especially with cap and trade in the future. Also, yes, I'm sorry, Monday, yesterday, attended the SASSA Board Meeting and approved the budget for the next year. That's all I have. Great, thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Attended some of the same events and some different meetings. Attended the Housing Authority Meeting, we're now Nevada, Sutter, Regional Housing Authority with, doing work in Colusa and looking at possibly taking Uba County, making that as part of our Regional Housing Authority. And right now, working on a project, building a affordable housing project in Live Oak. Also attended the Uba Sutter Transit Authority Meeting, working on installing video surveillance at Park and Right Side. There's been some bad vandalism and just working with, trying to get some grants to put those surveillance videos in, cameras in. Attended the Highway 99 ribbon cutting, the bridge, the Feather River Crossing. It was great to see all the local electors and the statewide elected officials there. It's a long time coming, you know, we probably have very little to do with the four-laning of the highway, the people before us that worked, the council people and the board supervisors, they worked hard. One of them was there, Supervisor Larry Matna, it was great to see him there. And their hard work, now we do have, we're linked to the rest of the world by a four-lane freeway should open up soon. This morning, attended the groundbreaking ceremony at Sutter County. They're also going to be going to solar energy, seems like the right thing to do in most government agencies and private sector, and even people at their homes are going to more and more solar energy. Going green, going to renewable resources, it was, sounds like it's going to be a good thing for our community. That's all I have to say.
Great. Vice Mayor Dukes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Starkey.
I had the opportunity to do the California Chrome Event, it was fabulous. Ribbon cutting at the bridge on Nicholas. As Tej said, this was a culmination of years of work to get this thing done, and all of our elected officials were up there taking credit for it, so it was pretty typical. Sorry, did I say that? The Regional Transit Afford Board meeting, and of course, the summer stroll we had the other day, so extremely busy, thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Dukes, you forget that these are televised, right? Speaking of televised, you probably noticed that we've got a new projector over here and new cameras in the room, which will make viewing for the public to be much better quality in the future, and I think we're probably one of the top ones in the area, so thank the staff for putting that together and doing the work to get that done.
The top one at City Council, or the cameras?
The cameras and the quality of the cameras that we have. These are high-definition cameras that will be doing the recording of the meetings now. HD. HD.
HD.
Busy with a number of different meetings. The North Sacramento Valley Water Board up in Willows, attended that meeting. Dealt with getting our final paperwork together for the Prop 84 grants. Attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency meeting and Gilser Drainage District meeting, Mosquito Vector meeting. Sutter Buttes, or excuse me, the SASSA Board, the Animal Services Control. And then attended the summer stroll last Saturday and had, we had a good turnout even with the heat. I think it got better as the evening went on. And also attended the ribbon cutting for the Feather River Bridge. And just to talk about that briefly. Yuba City has deferred its regional money for a number of years to get some of these projects done. And they were much needed projects getting it four-laned from Sacramento up to Yuba City. This is the last little bottleneck that we've had to deal with, the two lanes. And unfortunately, a lot of auto accidents that have happened over the years. And so this is for public safety wise, this is gonna be a great improvement on that stretch of road. But that said, and working together with the county and SECOG is that now it's our turn to get some of the projects done here through Highway 99, through the city. And we've deferred our share of those funds to be able to get some of these other projects done. And so it's gonna be good for us to be able to move forward with some of the things that need to be done right here in the city. And then in addition, I believe I attended, I think it's four different change of commands out at Beal Air Force Base. It's the season for that. So spend a lot of time going back and forth to Beal Air Force Base to honor the current leadership that is leaving and going on to other posts. Many of them, it seems, are going back to the Pentagon and other places. But welcoming the new leadership to our community and making them feel a part of our community. And I hear it out there all the time is that, that our community here does and welcomes the leadership and embraces the base better than any other community in the country. And I think that's a good testament to our community at large, the business community. They participate in a program called Happy Landings and they provide all kinds of coupons and discounts and different things for the spouses of incoming airmen and really to get them integrated into our community. And so it's a, it's a great relationship and like to see that continue on. That's all I have at this point.
Great. I also attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Agency meeting. If you've seen up and down the levee here, you'll see these big rigs. They've started the work. They've let, started leveling the levee down. And then, you know, starting to fix it back up. So they've started areas, jobs in four places. Interesting, some of the things they're finding. So they're continuing to work a lot of that stuff through. In addition to that, we just returned back Thursday from Japan, Thursday night for a seven day trip with our sister city, which is Toray Day. And I'd never gone to Japan nor been involved in the sister city program. There was about 13 of us from this region, including our city manager, Steve Crager, Superintendent Nancy Aubert, who went. First and foremost, you know, you go to a country not knowing what to expect. We all stayed with host families. And I could have probably, each one of us came back and felt that their host family was the most gracious, the most warmest. They opened their hearts. They opened their house. Family members, I mean, they go all out for you to make sure that you absolutely comfortable in every single thing that you need. And I was absolutely touched by the families that we all stayed for. In a nutshell, basically, I mean, you know, we saw, did a lot of good stuff. The first night we got there, just so you know, we had a groundbreaking ceremony that they had a plaque that had Yuba City and Toray for a garden, Yuba City Garden, a ceremony. And it was our 25th anniversary for our sister city to go back. And in all these years I've been on the council, I never understood the story of why Fujishiro, why Toray out of all the areas. And I don't know if you guys know the story or not, but I'll share it with the members that are here. Takasan, who's a gentleman who first came out to this area, was coming from the Sacramento-Davis area. And he was on his way to Colusa and he came by Greyhound bus to Marysville at the bus depot. And he stopped over there and he got in the car to go to Colusa and he's driving over the bridge. He saw the Sutter Buttes, which looked like, pretty much like Mount Scuba, which kind of looks like this. And he came down the bridge. He's noticing the city, the city of Yuba City, the climate. And he's driving to Colusa. He noticed the soils, the agriculture, just the lay of the land looked a lot like the Fujishiro Toray area. And so he went to Colusa and he came back. And I believe he stopped by at city hall, talked to them about the sister city stuff. And I believe Dennis Nelson was the mayor at that point in time. So they signed a agreement in principle of saying, yes, we will look at this. We will explore the options of the sister city. And then they brought a delegation back here to Yuba City and signed that. And ever since then, it's been a cultural exchange. And one of the things that we talked about, myself with the mayor as well as Takasan is, you know, this is wonderful that we've got a cultural exchange. Why not expand it or try to expand it to an economical exchange? But they had, when the cities had financial problems, they had Fujishiro and Toray. So the government just consolidated both of the cities into one and it's Toray. Population of Toray is about 110,000. The climate, geographic, it's pretty much exactly like Yuba City. Except for their three main sources or three main companies they've got there is they've got Cup Noodle, which manufactures obviously the cup noodle soup there. They got the Karen Beer Factory, which is Japan's number one beer distributor, beer seller. And they've got Canon Camera. So those three areas make up the jobs. Everywhere we went, we went to the schools. One day we visited three elementary schools and a middle school. The superintendent of the school was there greeting us as the minute we got off the bus. The principals were there, the vice principals were there. I mean, it was a red carpet affair everywhere we went. One of the things we learned is how to market Yuba City better. From what we haven't done, we learned that from the Chinese culture and we went back to China. Is that we, as a community, we do a lousy job of marketing ourselves because we here have so much to offer from our hunting to fishing. Our cultural diversity, we have it here, but we don't market it as well at all. Yeah, their education system is dynamite as far as what they do. They've got a special period and I took pictures and I wish I would have sent them. Terrell will definitely show them up here next time. Shoes come off the minute you go to school or wear these sandal shoes to go in. But they have a special period where the lunch is provided. The students serve the class. They eat in the class. After they get done eating lunch, the food's taken away. Very little waste. And then each child is assigned a duty of either sweeping, cleaning the classroom, washing the windows, sweeping the staircase. So everybody's got a duty. You don't see any trash whatsoever, not only in schools, but anywhere else. Just disciplined. So it's unbelievable walking away from Japan and learning what we've learned, people that we've visited. Unbelievable. We did go up in the fire truck 350 feet high. We did bring back a souvenir as far as a real fire hat, not a reserve fire hat, to put in our display case. Yeah, which is kind of their highest honor. We gave away our Yuba City hats.
I thought the highest honor was going up in that air truck.
Yeah, well, that was 350 feet high going up there. But you know, it's just like I said, it's interesting because we lose track when the delegation comes back here. And we're like, okay, well, the group's here. Are you gonna go take care of them? But when we were there, even the mayor traveled with us several times. Spent the whole day traveling with us and along was his staff. And I'm going, you know, you've got so much stuff going on. I mean, this is the last place. And he came and had lunch with us at one of the facilities as well. So it was very, very nice. Every place we went, we had the newspapers following us. We had the TV crew at one place on a boat ride. TV crew came out, wanted to film us. So it was good. Learned a lot. One of the things we are gonna do is sit back after we've had a little bit of downtime, is take a look at revamping the program. One of the things that Steve got feedback from association city members and one of the things that I got feedback, which we need to do is we need to tailor this program more around children, schoolchildren. That's what the exchange is about, cultural kids that are gonna remember this. We need to take a look at dates that work for the Toray government. And it may be within spring break and the reason it wasn't done in spring break because it's their recall day. But now that spring breaks changed here several times, we'll have to go back and revisit those dates or try to move it in the month of February where it's only one date. And that's kind of where this exchange program will be. We'll have to revamp the schedules. The mayor of Toray. Mayor Fuji was very excited about that. When they come here, we're gonna change up their entire schedule. One of the things that we told them to do is we have a full agricultural day. Two of some, somebody like Sun Sweet, Cordy Wines, walnut harvesting. And they were truly, truly excited to see some of that. So great time, great learning experience, great education experience. I'm glad I was able to go with the delegation from the city of Yuba City, a 25th anniversary. But learned a lot and it was a quick, basically even though it's seven days, a five day trip. Believe in a Thursday, you get there Friday night. So Thursday's gone, Friday's gone. So you start on a Saturday. And then we did visit two of the oldest Buddha temples that were at least 600 years old. And where I was staying was a family was right next to the Buddha temple. So stayed right at the temple, did a lot of praying. Yeah. Very, very nice. Very nice.
Question for you. How did the geese survive the trip over?
It was immaculate. The geese were a great hit. We explained on the presentation that was our gift to the, to the city was our honkers. Told them about the Canadian geese, told them why the Canadian geese, told them about the formation of the V, why they fly in the formation of a V and told them the whole history about it. So they got, they had a whole one-on-one about the Canadian geese.
Were you able to explain to them why, why one line is longer than the other?
No, I didn't get that detailed into it.
Basically because there are more geese in the one line.
Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to let you know.
I really appreciate that.
That makes sense.
I know.
So are they hanging in city hall now?
They were, you know, they were in the presentation hall where we were, but I believe they were gonna take them to the new city hall or the existing city hall, which was getting remodeled. It was getting earthquake retrofit. And so they were at the old facility.
Okay.
But the new offices were being done. So I'm pretty sure that that's where they will take it.
Well, I'm glad they made it there safely. It was.
They did. They did. And Jim, Jim did a great job. So it was a great trip. So with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.